We're just gonna give. Hey, everyone, we're just gonna give a couple more seconds for anybody else to jump on. I see a couple of people still connecting to audio as well. Okay. Well, go ahead and start. First things from jumping on for this quick call. In Town Hall, my name is Nicole Scavoni. I am the president of Calla. To give you a little bit of history about one of the matters we wanted to discuss with you guys today. Elaine from McManus from the Health Department reached out to all the presidents of the associations. So myself and CHCA, Leading Age. Sorry, bumped my. Computer and she reached out individually to say that at the end of last legislative session. The Health Department went to the Joint Budget Committee and requested some increased funds from the general fund. Now, this is for the whole Health Department, just not for assisted living. As they were definitely treading in the negative, they were unable to even stay competitive with positions. That they are hiring for and they were becoming more and more understaffed. And unable to fill positions. She's, she told us that the Joint Budget Committee said that the Health Department has always been a self funded entity. And that they needed to go back to everybody that essentially pays for the licenses under the Health Department. So that's where all of us come in because. As we've learned, the Health Department. When they broke down our financials, and this is where I know Janet was on one of those calls. He broke down their financials and they are very, they're, they're not, they're not financially surviving very well at all. As all of us are struggling. So we had some meetings about how much they needed, possible ways they could break it up amongst the licensure. Entities and we just, we couldn't stomach any increase at this time because we know the R assist to living providers. Were struggling so much. So we're very much in a neutral position. We understand their concerns, but also we're advocating for you guys. So that's why we wanted to bring those of you together and kind of update you on what's going on. Just one second, I need to stop my barking dog. Sorry. So. Basically, we've also started and brought in our lobbyist Jennifer. To kind of guide us and support us with this measure because what it's going to require is a. Basically, a bill that the Health Department is going to have to run to increase our licensure fees. And so they're obviously looking for support. But unless the members tell us different, right now, our stance is going to be that we just don't feel like we can afford. To pay any more money for our licensure fees. We have a couple of other scenarios and maybe a couple of ways we might use this to benefit us in the long run. We would like to see some efficiency changes in the Health Department. We'd like to see them maybe doing more of an efficient. Survey process. More of run their IJs more efficiently, all those types of things. We haven't really gotten much into the weeds that yet because right now they just kind of wanted to see if any of us would give support. I can tell you that all the other assisted livings are where we are as well. Associations, nursing home associations, the hospital associations, they're all standing pretty true to the fact that at this time they just. Can't imagine small swelling and increase. So that's kind of where we are right now. We wanted to share that with you guys and also see if, you know, anybody disagreed with us and thought maybe. An increase in the licensure fees would, would be something we should agree to at this time. I can't tell you that I think there is going to be an increase of some type that will probably get passed through next legislative session. So please make sure to be watching your emails once we get closer to session. Because we're going to need support and we're going to need your feedback as to how to guide and drive our. Our lobbyist Jennifer to support us. So that's basically the short version of the increased licensure fees.
Do they have this funding poll? We kind of talked about in terms of. Should we answer it? Should we not answer it? How should we answer it? Any thoughts on that?
So I think we should answer it. I think it's important to have our, our, our voices heard. And I also, there's plenty of opportunities to say, hey, I can't afford any increase right now. I can't tell you that Elaine McManus actually kind of was on our side, you know, she, when she was going to the joint budget committee, she was actually saying, hey, listen. I'm asking people that just went through a pandemic that are still suffering, trying to keep their heads afloat, can't find staff. The Medicaid providers are closing their doors. I mean, she really did try our case. And so you'll notice that some of these questions kind of are silly, right? Like they're kind of like. Well, do you feel like the old department, you know, should have an increase? I mean, it's just things, but she's really doing that to kind of bait and switch. To, to be able to turn around and show the joint budget committee, hey, listen, like they really can't, can't garner any increase. So yeah, I do think we should answer that, I think, but we should be honest that we can't afford it unless, again, if you, if you don't believe what, but we believe. We want to hear you as well. We're just, from what we've heard from our members is that everyone is still struggling, struggling, struggling to find staff. Afford staff and a lot of overtime. But I think it's important to answer the poll.
We also worked on a little bit, what we thought was a more equitable. At one time, they were throwing an example of just a thousand dollars per license. Well, there's some group homes that own a lot of group homes, so they get, they get a disproportionate amount of those fees. So, you know, we did say, you know, we would be more in favor of the per bed fee, you know? Right now, we pay three hundred and sixty dollars for the like, for the renewal plus a hundred and three dollars a bed. We thought it should be like, I don't know.
If you're a hundred and three, if you're private pay though, let's. That's one of the things we have to really distinguish and one of the things we talked about in this as well is, is. There's everybody, I mean, the hospitals, associations were on this call, the nursing home associations were on this call and. The bottom line is, is, you know, our Medicaid providers are suffering. So we do want to make sure if you're a Medicaid provider to let them know. Like again, you can't really afford much. And so when we were talking about this, you know, we were throwing out things like, oh, you know. A two dollar a bed increase for Medicaid and a eight dollar a bed for, I mean, they're so. If you really look at it, they're in such the red. I mean, they are such in the red. I can't even begin to tell you how much in the red they are. So.
Nicole Hillary has a question. Did they propose a, a number? You know what? And it was something. Three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is what they needed from ALRs, something like that. You know what? Let me pop through my. Screenshots, Nicole, and see if I can answer that.
Yeah, so. They haven't really given us an exact number of what, they know what their shortfall is, and I do agree with Jana. I think it was close to. Four hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand dollars a year that they're short, that they're going to ask ALRs for. If they decide that they're going to break it out by provider types. And because the hospitals felt like they wanted it broken out differently and then of course, ALRs, we wanted it different and then. If you looked at home health, they, the home health was hardly in the negative at all, or nursing home was one of those other categories where. They're like, oh, well, we should only have to worry about what we, what our department needs and, but then it came into contact that. Like the whole Health Department uses auxiliary staff, like people answering the phones and, you know, clerical, like. That's shared amongst provider types. So then who should have to pay for that? It just got, we just got so in the weeds that we were finally just like. Yeah, we don't, we don't feel like we want to agree to anything.
Nicole, I did find this slide. I'm trying to get, see if I can get screen share. Yeah. All right, I did find it. This right here is, this was everybody. Under the left hand side, this is the programs that fall under. All of the health facilities and ALR is under ALR. They, they want four point six additional full time employees. And the additional cost would be three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So then they would have twenty-five, almost twenty-six surveyors. And so they need to increase the licensing cost by, to a total of two, two million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
And actually, that FTE proposed total licensing, that's not surveyors. It's just they need twenty-five point six total full time employees in the ALR division.
Yeah, yeah. Some of those were office people. I think they were trying to add another. All the people that support survey are even like Betsy, who does survey reviews, she does plan of corrections. Those are all people that roll up. Under the ALR part of the department. So this is kind of what they were looking at is, is this slide here. I don't think the rest of them were. They, they did a little bit of a, we have a lot more complaints than, than we used to have. And so that's why, you know, they say there's an increase in costs to them. Here's some of their facility types and their growth. Assisted living went from six oh seven in two thousand and fifteen to six hundred and eighty-seven. In two thousand and twenty-two. So those are the, some of the things they shared with us on the meetings. Just trying to justify their position of where they, why they're short, you know?
And I mean, it did make sense. We all know that if you're, if you're working for a state agency, you know, you have a great benefit package. So sometimes your hourly rate is a little bit less, but what they're finding is, is that individuals are less interested in a great benefit. Package and honestly want more money or, you know, they want more time off. A lot of also too is just kind of the structure of how the departments run. So. Just, I think where we felt the best stance was is they're really pushing us for an answer because of course, they want to start to meet their legislative timelines. And we just couldn't agree on anything. So right now, like I said, we're in the neutral position. We still really want to work with them. We are collaborating with CHCA and Leading Age. So that we can be a united voice when it comes to this. Janelle, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, that's me.
You look like a scary person in the dark there.
Did you have a question, Janelle?
Janelle, you're on mute. That's because she has a bag over her head.
I do, I should, I should. Anyway, the reason, the thing that I found a little bit frustrating in that meeting is that, you know, she was talking about. Elaine is not on this call, right? And she's on the participants. I didn't see her. Okay, so she was talking about the increase because they need to get more surveyors. And that they had to, and they had to be able to pay the surveyors what other nursing wages are. Well, a requirement of being a survey does not require a degree in nursing is one of my issues. I did bring that up and she said in some, you know, in some situations it does, but in the most part it doesn't. I guess my second issue is, is, you know, they have been down eight to nine surveyors for most of this year. So they should be saving an awful lot of money with not having to pay these eight to nine surveyors that they have been short all year. And so. And the other thing was something that Doug Farmer brought up, if the surveyors, if, you know, the surveys, surveyors had their stuff together. And we weren't in such a gray area all the time and we knew what to expect, we probably wouldn't have so much of an issue of having them to get more surveyors. Because what's going to happen? They're going to get these new, these surveyors and we're going to have these newbies that are going to be coming in like we've all experienced. That don't know anything, twenty-four, twenty-five year olds that are telling us how to run a business that we've been in for twenty years. So one of the main things she was pushing is they needed to be able to pay their surveyors more money to be able to get more surveyors and had to. Have it on the same realm of what a nurse, you know, what nurses receive and that's not really the case. I understand the staffing, you know, of the administrative staff. I understand the Betsy. I understand all of that. But the reason that they are so far behind in their surveyors is because they can't keep surveyors. So is that really because of the money? Is that because of who they have leading the department that can't get along with who the surveyors are? I mean, what is the problem that they can only keep half of the surveyors that they have? I think we have to, I understand the raise in the licensing fee and I'm not pointing any fingers. But I just question the amount that they want to raise from the monies that they have saved. And one other thing, Nicole, and then I'll shut up and let you talk. The other thing was too, is when it, with the increase of fines, we did ask, what about the money that's going for the increase of fines? And they said that all goes towards education. So maybe that's something that has to be looked at in the future. With maybe some of that money going towards their needs in the shortfall, but that has to be, I think, done by legislation. I'm not sure.
And I guess, so there was this another side conversation with again, just those of us. Okay, so the call then sparked, hey, we're not happy with the survey process. Because we did feel like, and we were guided by Jennifer not to get into the weeds about the turnover and their surveyors and all that. Like that's an internal problem. Um, granted, some of that will start to just like. You know, be pretty evident when we go through this legislative process, but our, our legislators said, hey. Focus on what the deficiencies are in their practice. Focus on where, like if you guys, like I can tell you, if I'm in a shortfall, I need to figure out how to function more efficiently in my budget. So what are they doing to function more efficiently? Are they, can they do smaller, shorter surveys? What do they do with IJs? You know, you know, think the whole survey process needs to be looked at. And so I think that's one of the things we really want to try and do. And turn this tied into, okay. You know, maybe you guys need to figure out a better survey process and then maybe one, it'll save you money, but maybe two, then maybe I would be willing to pay a couple of. Extra bucks a bed for it. I don't know, just speaking hypothetically. And so that was one thing that the lobbyist said would be a good way to go. Because we do have so many problems with the way the surveys are, process is. And Doug and Deb from the other associations agreed. And so Elaine kind of had a call with just those of us in our association. And what we're hearing from our members as far as how they're dissatisfied with the survey process. I can tell you, at the end of the day, it did become very particular with our most recent concerns. Once Elaine transitioned out of her position and there's been some leadership changes. And so she, she said she was very much aware that they were really going to start looking at more internal processes. Processes of the, of our division, that they are our division. So I think we need to keep pushing that too. Because it would be helpful if we had more effective surveys as well. And I agree with you, Janelle. I think when she said RN, she also kind of put her foot in her mouth because I know they need RNs for. The nursing home side and the hospital side and for the home health side, but they don't really need it for our side. So again, too, like that's where all the increase in numbers came out the next time is, hey, listen, what do you really need for ALR? What do you really need for nursing home? Because if you need five nurses for nursing home to do those surveys, like we shouldn't pay that price. So I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, Jesse, Jesse put in the chat that they're, they're not really going to share their dirty laundry with us. I think we have to be realistic about that. We don't share our turnover problems with them. So they're, they're probably not going to throw their department under the bus and say, you know, this department is horrible to work for. So they're not going to disclose that, but we did a hundred percent bring that to their attention. When you're looking at cutting at costs and you're looking at turnover, if you're only looking at what you pay people, you're missing part of the puzzle. And so we really did stress, they need to look at the whole reason because just if you throw more money at it and you don't know. What the, what the problem is with your turnover, more money isn't going to solve that. So we were very, very much in their face about that. Yeah.
And they, and they did bring up a good point too. I mean, and this was, this was just with the call with Doug and Deb. You know, it's very similar to the same reason why our case management programs at the counties, for those of us that are Medicaid providers, have a high turnover. It is a state funded job and we're never going to get out of that, right? This is always going to be state funded jobs. You get these people out of college. These people transitioning out of being, you know, EDs for large communities, whatever it is that wants a state job. You know, a lot of them, if they are just starting out, trying to get good, you know, references and good things put on their resume. Are not going to stay as a surveyor for very long. It is not a fun job. It, it does require a lot of travel, no matter how you look at it. No one's ever happy to see you. And so they did say, they said, yeah, they did say that it's, it's. They don't anticipate, they want to fix their turnover, but it is, it's not a job that a lot of people want. And so. And I know when I talk to the case managers at the counties and those supervisors, they're like, we can't keep people. They come here, they get a good. You know, thing to put on the resume and then they go to something bigger and better. Like when you work for a state agency, it's stressful. And so that's the other thing to be mindful of is that, yeah, we might not be able to. Fix their turnover to a certain extent.
Well, you know what? And on a positive note, we may be able to turn this into something that's good for our industry though, because we may have leverage to. Prove their survey process. And we specifically brought up that why do you send two surveyors to a sixteen bed facility? When sometimes you don't send them any to the large, you're not looking through a hundred percent of the large people's books. So we may be able to leverage that to our benefit is what we're hoping.
Arlene?
Yes, actually, every time I talk to you this group and every time I talk to you guys, I get surveyed. I'm not going to talk to you anymore. But yesterday I actually did get a survey and it was a very nice, she's been to three of my facilities now. Her name is Stacey. She's an RN, did very well, but you know what's interesting? I think they might be listening to you because she showed up at eleven o'clock in the morning and she was gone by three. And she called it and it's very confusing and it was very confusing on purpose, I think. Because she said, I'm here for your survey. I'm going to be looking at your medications. Your resident agreements and I'm going to be talking to the residents. And as she was leaving the door, she literally said, I just want you to know this counts as your survey, but don't be surprised if you see someone else.
You know, Medicaid facility.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, they have to get so many Medicaid things done. They're doing very. They have to get a ton of them done for Medicaid.
So basically CMS has a regulation that they must step into our buildings every three years. They're hoping for an extension of that due to COVID, but CMS said no. So they have everybody and that's just not here in the state, that's across the country. They said no. And so now I had a survey by D two weeks ago. If you have a Medicaid facility and they haven't been in your door to do a survey in the past three years, you will see them before the end of the, the end of July.
Okay, that explained it because this facility hasn't had one in three years.
Yeah, D came into my building and was literally there for three hours.
And it was one person, one person?
One was D Rita. I had D Rita come to my building.
Wow, you know, they're desperate when D's going in.
She said they all are. Chris, Cory's back out in the field, anybody.
That's good.
Out in the field, they're doing quick three hour surveys. They kind of, she flipped through my book, she talked to my resident, she kind of looked at the met. The Mars, I'll be honest, she didn't even look at my med cart.
No, she didn't look at our medical records either.
Yeah.
What you guys are saying is their little quick checklist of what they need to review and then they're out of there. Interesting.
Yeah, because they haven't been in there for three years and they're getting in trouble. So they're having to get in there for, which, you know, we'll take it. You know, you'll take it, that's your survey, but you know, they're, they're having to get it done. They're not getting done. I know a Medicaid facility that hasn't been surveyed in five years.
So. And it's interesting, it's interesting that you say that. She opened the med cart, she didn't do anything with it. She opened it up, shut the door. And I was like, okay, sure. And, but then she also said at the same time, which made me concerned was. This is your survey, but be prepared, it might be not be your complete survey. So I was wondering if anybody's heard on, it's not your complete survey, but she tells me it's her survey?
No, I, I got the same thing when I was at one of the clients I consult with, they, they showed up during my regular visit. And she said the exact same thing. Don't count it, don't count this, this is a mini, this is a survey today. We may or may not be back within three to six months, is what she told her.
Yep.
And D kind of, D kind of told me she thought it was our survey. But this was one of the things that I said that needs to be changed if we focus on equitable surveys and efficiency. I also think if you're stepping into Medicaid facilities and you have to be in there every three years, you better be in every private pay facility every three years too. So I'm just going to tell you, I have a friend who has a private pay facility and no one's been in that door except for infection prevention in almost seven years. So you're missing the people that are not doing the right thing unless they have a major occurrence or a major, you know, complaint. They're not stepping into those buildings. And so when they do go in those buildings or they do end up getting a complaint or a major occurrence, that's giving our industry a black eye. So I mean, I get the Medicaid providers, like, but I mean, you got to be getting into these private pay buildings just as often, if not more often as well. Because they're just, it's easy to fly under the radar till something really bad happens.
The other thing, Nicole, we have now have the RPP program. So we have the expenses of that now too as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, you're adding more and more, the state is adding more and more stuff to it, but not understanding that when they add this. We have expenses.
Program, has anybody thought, what if you set up your admission and discharge criteria that you don't keep infectious control issues? Does that make you exempt from that program with the? Not allowing us to do that anymore and they, and you used to be able to set up your own admission and discharge criteria, but they're not.
So the problem is, is, is that. If someone is asymptomatic, has no symptoms, has COVID, norovirus, something like that, the flu. You can't discharge someone for that. And even if you could, what are you going to do with them till then? You have to protect yourself. So the problem is, is this has been an OSHA regulation for since two thousand and, I don't know, maybe even they said nineteen ninety-eight. That you had to have a respiratory protection program. The problem is, is they never enforced it till COVID.
Until three years into COVID, that's.
Yeah, and so, so now it's like we, we, yeah, so here we are. And I mean, I don't. It is what it is. We couldn't, there's no way to safely discharge someone. And care for them, even if we could, like who's going to take them? You know, like a discharge, who's going to take someone with COVID? I'm not, who's going to take someone? I'm not, like, we're just not.
So is this going to go and rule and is this, excuse me, is this going to go and rule and reg because?
It already is.
It already is.
After two.
You know, I've never had anybody come in and do that. I've never had OSHA show up at my door, that's for sure. So I was just curious if it's already been in there, right? Like you said, you know, after this time, this much time after COVID. Why are they pressing this?
Well, they added it to chapter two, February of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, they did? Thanks, Jen.
And I think the other piece of it is, is they tried to tell us too, it's always been in there because this is, we have to follow all state, federal and local ordinances. And so OSHA is part of that. So we can't really dodge it. I mean, we can sit, I mean, we can put all this energy and trying to talk about dodging it, but we'll never be able to dodge it. So now it's just. How are we going to function within it? I do have a meeting with Colin Laughlin at Hickpuff in like the second week in July. And one of the things on my agenda is, so how do you want me to have my Medicaid providers pay a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars? Per employee for this respiratory program. And I've been doing a vast amount of research and three M actually is a, like the cheapest I've found. One for the masks and two to, you know, do the whole process is about a hundred bucks per employee. But still a lot.
Well, and the other thing, just to let you know, that's why I asked about RPP was because the surveyor just approached yesterday. And I'm giving your buddy a heads up. The first thing she asked for was ICP certification.
She, Dee asked me for mine too.
Yeah, and it was fine because we were fine, but anybody out there that hasn't done the ICP. Heads up, surveyors are on it. So I was worried about RPP because it went into effect in February. So I was, I was wondering if any surveyors have done anything with RPP.
So I did bring that to the intention of the Health Department. When we were speaking with April and some of the other. When we were speaking with April and some of the other leads. And I said, you guys gotta make sure that you're telling the health department, they can't survey us to this yet. I said, because the next thing I I'm gonna see is all these surveyors come through and start giving IJs. Because we don't have enough in functioning R P P program, and I was like, and you guys have to call them off right now. Cuz like you have to, like you have to give us time to do this, like we're barely, like you guys are just now teaching us this stuff. And you, and even April will say they don't even know the answers yet, April, dear, um, bird, dear Dorf. Yeah, she doesn't need, she's like, I don't even know what the answers and don't even have all the resources for you guys yet, it's like, okay, then you can't survey us to this. So.
I was worried, I was worried.
Typically, OSHA takes the lead on this stuff. And so it's interesting that OSHA even came to us at that last meeting and said, well, we've backed way off this and we're not gonna. You know what, we're not gonna go ahead and have this be a priority. And of course, the regulator lady just chimed in and said, well, this is chapter two, you will do it. And it's like, well, wait a minute, you know, usually on employee protection, OSHA is the primary regulator, not the state. And all of a sudden now the state has decided that now that we are backing off of COVID, we get to go ahead and. And start flexing our muscle on this, on these other programs. And I I don't think it's, it's right, the way they're doing this.
Well, CMS didn't give them an option either. So if you're a Medicaid provider under CMS, they mandated a R P P as well.
So, so maybe those who are not so. But I mean, I just listened in on the conference cuz we have a meeting tomorrow right at noon about the R P P. And I just listened in and it was just like. When, I can't remember, when was it adopted into chapter two?
February.
Oh, okay, and so. I I just, I I guess I, I'm, 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 so with your private pay, it doesn't matter, you still have no other option, right? You have to, you still have to abide by it.
I mean, they didn't even have to technically put it in chapter two. Because it just says we have to abide by all federal, state and local. Like regulations and I even know Jefferson County right now, if you're an assistant living in Jefferson County, Jefferson County Public Health. Is mandating you have an R P P program. I don't know what Weld or some of those other counties are doing, but I know Jeffco even sent around a little alert saying. Do you need resources for R P P? And I said, I emailed him, I said yes, and they sent me the link to the OSHA website. Which is not a helpful website at all, I'm like, thanks, I've been working on that for three months now, I get it, like.
Well, I guess maybe I, I, Nicole, thank you for researching this and fighting the battle for us, number one, everybody that's out there doing that. But in all actuality, in how I perceive it is, and. Is we learned something from COVID that we weren't ready for. So now we're gonna put the R P P program out there to protect all of our staff and our residents and I get it. Okay, but with that goes a large expense. That, yes, we were all getting our free masks, yes, we were getting our free COVID tests, that's gone to the wayside. Okay, then now we're gonna put the R P P and I have found fit tests around a hundred and seventy dollars. But you still gotta do it annually, you still have the serum, you still have the expenses, you have, still have the masks. And God forbid if you have any facial hair. I don't even want to mention that.
Well, and plus it's, it is portable, I did check with Steve, it is portable, so it's like the T B test. But the problem with it is it's still annual, so you have to do it annually. That's considered compliant because they say people change, they gain weight, they lose weight, they may have surgery, whatever.
They may get facial hair.
They may get facial hair. So it's only, it's only valid for one year, so you're looking at, if you have eleven staff, that's at least a hundred and fifty dollars per staff member per year.
And and not to say your staff stays, right?
The turnover, you have to pay it again, yeah.
Jan, I do wanna mention, you're right, it is not available statewide. What the resources I'm finding is, the cheapest way for me to do it for my program is. Three M has a little site that your employee logs on to and I think it's thirty dollars. Don't quote me on that, all I know is when I did the numbers, it came out to a hundred dollars per employee. They log on and they do this little questionnaire and some physician somewhere in the universe reviews it. And then sends back that they're okay or they're not okay torn in ninety-five. And then I'm actually buying the kit. To do the tests, is there's a, there's a quick little training, it is actually very easy. Um, and I'm gonna test my, my employees upon hire. And I am gonna allow someone ask, well, what are you gonna do with men? I said, well, what OSHA said they do with their own male surveyors, they have to shave to be fit tested. But after that, they, when they give them their N ninety-fives, they also give them a razor. So if they have to wear their N ninety-five, they have to go in the bathroom and they have to shave and put their N ninety-five on to respond to whatever they need to respond to. Yes. I just went on, let me look and see if I can find it again, Hillary.
I'm not sure what the chat was, but you're exactly right, I have a shortcut for you Nicole, cuz you don't have to do the, the. Medication where the physician has to sign off, I just totally drew a blank on that, what's it called?
The medication, the medical evaluation.
Yes, the medical evaluation. If you have a RN that is not in obviously a director of operations position like me, but I can't do that. But if you have a RN that is willing to review those. You can actually pay less and they can just review those for you, and if they need to see the doctor, then you can go to your other route.
And see, I, I am an RN, but I felt like I was scared that that was going to. Like cause some sort of weird conflict in interest.
Yeah, that's why I won't do mine.
Yeah, that's why.
Just do each others.
We could.
Then you could do Rocky Mountains too.
I did check through Concentra, cuz a lot of places use Concentra for work comp. And they are eighty dollars for the test and seventy dollars for the questionnaire.
But then the reason I steered away from that, cuz I thought about that too Janet, was then you have to pay your employee to go down there.
Yeah.
Tested, I'm like, I would rather, like, have them when they're doing their training onsite at my office. Log on and do that, and then I know it might be a little cheaper. So that's respiratory.
Well, and I don't think it's legal to do as a contingency for, contingency for hire either, you can't pass it on to the employee.
No, they, I think that's part of the regulation is it has to be employer paid. I just listened in on that recording and it said it was all of our responsibility.
Has it worked out that we get a hold of our work comp doctors to have them do it?
Okay, I haven't heard back from mine, I'm sorry Nicole.
No, that is, so that's a good thing, so I reached out to Blake. Who is my insurance carrier Crawford and he sent me to someone internally now. They might not be able to help with the medical stuff, but you know how we have to have a policy and procedure and we have to have an actual training program. He told me and they told me that they might already have that. So they could just send me the bones and then I could adapt it for my own program because. With three M, okay, so maybe I can get the stuff and the medical evaluation, but honestly. I don't wanna figure out how to write a policy and procedure and all the training and everything. So if I can get that for my work comp carrier, for my insurance carrier, so I do encourage everybody to also reach out to them.
I think Pinnacle has, has a program because I know. Fire departments have to do fit testing and they, and Pinnacle had that, and then when I worked at a central pump. They had to have a fit testing and they, they, Pinnacle has a program that they'll pay for some of that for us.
Great. I think that, I mean, I think that's one of the things we'll definitely encourage is for people to reach out to the workman's comp providers. And then I did put the links for the medical evaluation at three M and then the products. And then if you go in further on the three M site, you can, it goes through all the training. It's interesting too, they have an app that you can download on your phone. And if you're the one doing the fit tests, it's called Wear It Right through three M. And you can download the individual's information. And I guess it, I don't know because I haven't gotten all the products yet, but then you can kinda do the fit test with the app and I don't know. I don't know, but it was kinda, kinda interesting.
I had another question, so as part of this program, are we mandating mask wearing? No.
Okay.
Only if you have somebody in your building that's sick.
If they are, if they are sick, if they are sick or if you're.
Yeah.
Or your resident is sick, you have to wear.
With what, sick with what?
Anything, flu.
Yeah. Actually, not have somebody in our building sick. Well, if your staff is sick, they're supposed to go home, that's, that's still in the mandate.
You're just telling us to follow our infection prevention policy and procedure.
All right.
No, if you have someone with symptoms, of course, they want you to contact the doctor, do all applicable testing to see if it's. Something of contagious nature, and if so, then they need to be wearing masks, we need to be wearing masks, all that kinda good stuff.
So how long do you have to get somebody fit tested, does anybody know? So if you have an employee and you hire him, you go through the training and you go through everything, I mean, is there. If they walk in the door and you've hired this person, is there a certain amount of time that they have to get fit tested?
This is what April told me, and I really did like this answer, and I told her I'd like it in writing, she said. She said, now, I guess if someone's in training. Maybe after they complete your, their training and they're on the floor and they're working, then spin the cost to have them go through the medical evaluation. And the fit test, because she said the only thing that would happen is, is I guess. If someone did get sick and they had to wear an N ninety-five, you'd have to push them through before they could work. But if they're in training, then you would obviously have someone already assigned to the shift anyway, and I thought that was interesting. She's like, yeah, I wouldn't do that right off the bat, like T B test or the background check, like. Wait till they're kind of vetted and in, and I'm like, oh, that is a really good idea, so.
Yeah.
That's how I'm gonna write my infection, my R P P program, is that they need to complete training. That they need to be, you know, scheduled for their first shift and then we'll complete the, the stuff, so.
Because I think you have thirty days, like on food safety, you have thirty days, there's some things that are by. Reg and rule that you have thirty days to, you know, to get it done. That's why I was asking, cuz that's not, you know, none of that was in, I don't even know if that's seven or two, I think that was actually seven. That had all that smell stuff, so that you had to have done in so many days, but that was not included in what you're saying. Now it's in chapter two, it's not in chapter seven, so that's why I was asking, so when you're, you have to tell people you've gotta get these trainings done by this amount of time. You've gotta get different things done. So I guess that's part of your infection control, thirty days.
And she basically said, like, if it's someone that's never gonna, like. I mean, I guess you would need to have them trained before they needed to wear an N ninety-five.
Well, and I don't think people that don't deal with personal care, like if, if you do have housekeeping and stuff, they might have to cuz they have to go in the residence rooms. But if you have kitchen staff, they're never around the residents within six feet unless they're serving meals in the dining room and somebody's sick. But I tried to figure out an avenue that maybe three of your people could be fit tested. And then those three people would be assigned to people in the rooms, but I'm not sure that's bulletproof, I mean, I.
No, cuz if those three people get sick and they can't work because they're sick, then you're screwed.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope, my, my whole thing is, it's gonna be like that initial painful cost. Of everybody getting in ninety-five every year. And then I'm just hoping like if I hire one of Rachel's employees and she hires one of mine, then they come already with their fit test card. And their medical evaluation, so you have to get a copy of their approved medical evaluation and a copy of their fit test to put.
Steve didn't think that if the other company paid for it, it belonged to the company, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily belong to the employee, which I think could be fought. You know, cuz a lot of us let somebody take their T B test with them when they leave.
No, but, no, 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 it doesn't belong to me as a wildflower, it belongs to the medical evaluation company. Cuz they're the ones that are mandated to keep the record for thirty years. So the employee is gonna have to go back to them and give them the okay to release to us or get a copy of it to release to us.
But what if you do your own, if you do your own?
Do your own medical evaluations unless you have a nurse on file.
Oh, I was thinking about the fit test, yeah.
Yeah, you were thinking about the fit test, so the fit test doesn't belong to me. He was talking about the medical evaluation, the medical evaluation, so if three M does my medical evaluation. And I go and work for Rachel, I'm gonna have to get a hold of that three M and tell them they can release my information to Rachel. Like HIPAA and all that kinda stuff, the okay. And then the fit, but then I, Rachel, as my new employer, is gonna have to validate that three M is an appropriate medical evaluator.
Right.
Then if a wildflower does my fit test and I turn it into Rachel, then Rachel has to somehow agree. That a wildflower was a suitable fit test provider. It's kinda like CPR, and then, you know, has to evaluate that I was appropriate fit tester for her to accept it. She has to write in her infection prevention or her R P P program that she will take outside fit tests and outside medical evaluations.
Well, and it's crazy cuz even your, your employee, your employer can't have your medical evaluation.
Um, they, well, not the detail, not the detail, it just says, yes, you're cleared, no, you're not.
Correct.
And we also responsible to keep those documents for thirty years.
Thirty years.
Nicole, what are we supposed to do with the person that can't be fit tested? They can't work.
So they can work, because I do have one employee, I'll be honest with you, I have one employee that fail, well, she didn't fail fit testing. But she tried to wear an N ninety-five and she has some claustrophobia issues and had anxiety, so I'll be honest with you. If I, she had, she couldn't work with COVID patients, I had to bump her to another house, we had a COVID outbreak. She could only wear a regular mask, she could not wear an N ninety-five, and so I already know with her, the choice is mine, like I keep her employed. Knowing she's gonna have to go to another house. But I only have one out of all my employees, I have some that told me, oh, there's no way, but. I don't wanna wear one either, that doesn't mean I can't.
The nightmare.
So it does protect us, there's a very small percentage of people that fail, very small.
Well, have you had any that came out of your medical evaluation that failed?
Well, I, I'm anticipating she will.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I like the way I just told you, if I have another RN that doesn't, they have to keep that for thirty years. They have to keep that paper somewhere for thirty years.
Well, and if that RN is working for one of our other facilities, I'd be careful about us being obligated on that. Through that facility and I, as an RN, I wouldn't do it myself, to be self obligated on that. I'd be careful about that in-house stuff. But.
Yeah, I'm just.
Save us money.
I'm, I'm not thrilled about keeping anything for thirty years. Because then.
Their own physician though, if they do have a physician, right, they can go through their own medical provider.
But are you?
Again, I think that work comp.
Yeah, I, you're not gonna pay a private provider, and I called my own private provider, they said they don't do fit testing at all.
I, I did too. They will not do.
But I don't wanna pay private pay for that, that would be a couple hundred bucks to send someone to their regular doctor.
And workman's comp's gonna charge you, and then your workman's comp gonna go up, your mod fa, mod factor gonna go up.
Yeah, yeah, those, so Janet's right, if you get in a pinch, you can send them to Centura. Like or what was it? Yeah, because my Concentra provider actually reached out to me and said, hey, I hear everybody uses R P P now, do you wanna send your employees in? It's like, not for a hundred and eighty dollars, I don't. And I said, are you gonna fit him with three M? And she's like, well, I don't know, it depends what we have, I'm like, no, because I asked, I want someone fitted with a mask, it's gonna cost. Seventy dollars mask, like, I know, and even what we heard on the respiratory program training was three and by far is the cheapest. And when I looked around, they really are.
They are.
They really are, and you can order a small box of like five or ten of them, you don't have to order fifty of them.
Right. But we don't really have any answers for anybody, we've just thrown a bunch of, you know, we started talking about the funding now. When you guys do your survey for the increased funding, let's dive back into that. You know, they do need to present to the legislator that they did go to the. Providers to ask for a raise, um, you know, and. So they, they do have to check that box. They do have to go back to the legislator. And say, we did go to our providers and eighty percent of them said no, or whatever the, you know, so. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, you know, they do.
But don't they, don't they, Janet, I mean, don't they have to provide some type of, I know I saw Jesse, I think I saw some of your, your comment was. Like, where is the data? I mean, where is the?
They did, that was that, they did. They did.
But was it, was it clear? Was it really outlined in stuff?
Yeah, yeah, they did do it. They did it several times on the meetings. Um, I have some of the slides that I felt were, you know, they, they went way in the weeds on it, which was stupid. Um. But they did, they did justify that they. You know, they're, they're saying they're not paying enough money as to why they can't recruit people. I, I still think there's some issues there with, you know.
I think so too, because like internally, we were just saying, like, why are people leaving? Is there, what, you know?
Um, they did not disclose what they pay surveyors, because I asked that a couple of times. What's the starting salary for a survey? I guess that's open record if we want to look it up.
Yeah, well, someone did find that. It's like fifty-six thou. Was it fifty-six or sixty-four thousand? I forget.
Yeah.
When I, when I worked for a sniff, I, when I worked for a sniff, I asked the surveyors, I asked four of them.
The sniff gets more, sniff gets more.
It was only sixty-eight.
Yeah, because you have to be a nurse to do sniff, but yeah.
And I, because I, I, I kind of thought it would be kind of nice to do that myself. No, Janet, you, you have to be a nurse. My, my sister's a surveyor in this, in nursing homes.
No, in a nursing home, you have to be a, you have to be a nurse, not an A L. Yeah, not for us.
Oh, oh, no, no, she's not a nurse, though. Did she have to have a nurse?
Not anymore, Rachel. It used to be a few years back you did, but.
Oh, I see, okay.
Not anymore. You don't have to be, because I researched it, I looked at it and you don't.
Yeah.
You don't have to be anymore. It's just too bad we couldn't send back a bunch of these uh, quick rapid tests and. They could do the quick, the fit testing for us, since there's people that have boxes and boxes of all of this stuff. And COVID was just trying, just giving money away for different things. And now they're gonna come in with this. It's just.
Well. And I know we're jumping around, but um, I am gonna ask Colin if there's any ARPA money left for Medicaid providers. Because if there is, then maybe Medicaid providers can get like, if they turn in like. Proof of a hundred dollars per fit test per whoever, and maybe they can get reimbursed or maybe they can run a clinic. Or something would be nice. Um, but Rachel, back to what you were saying about the survey process and the surveyers. We did talk to Jennifer and one of the things we want the membership to like consider is, you know. The turnover in the health department is gonna come up organically, probably when they start talking about this to the legislators. However, we, we feel like it might be better to take the stance of, listen. We really don't care what your turnover is internally, because please don't ask me why mine turnover. Run effective, can you run effective, like an effective survey process? And maybe that's where we can focus, is this be our ability to push a more effective survey process? Um, because we also, one thing that was also made pretty clear is, is. It doesn't matter what state agency you work for, it's hard to keep people. I mean, it's. I know they said in nursing homes, they have a great group of surveyors, but they're basically retired nurses that didn't want to work on the floor anymore. And so they get into this cushy, you know, what they consider cushy nine-to-five job, working for the, for the state and. Basically, someone said on the call, that's where nurses go to die. It's in the nursing home survey process.
I might have to share that with my sister.
Well, it was actually one of the nursing home surveyors who said it, so I can say it. She's like, yeah, that's where we all go to die. But then, but then Elaine goes, yeah, but that's part of the problem. Like you guys are all retiring and as they retire, they can't recruit a younger group of nurses. Because the pay's not competitive. I mean, so that, it circles back to. The problem they're having, but I thought that.
Well, and we actually did bring up too, I, I think even though we don't want them in our buildings, the industry is safer. If the state health department is out there all the time and everybody's building, because you did have, you, you, you had some incentive. And you also could tell your staff the state's coming. Well, my staff was like, well, they're not coming for three years, so big deal, you know? So it is safer for the industry to have the state health department out there in every building, every year. But what they need to accept is they need to change their survey process, that it does not have to be an eight-hour survey every year. They just need to be able to walk through the buildings. Um, you know, and they.
Put their eyes in there.
I, I do some mock surveys for companies. I said, Dee, I can tell you when you hit the front door and you walk into the kitchen in the living room, if the facility is well-run. So why can't you guys, so they, hopefully they will listen to some of those ideas. They did say they were gonna put together a team of people that would. Work on, but Jennifer said she thought our lobbyist thought it should be an independent party. That refused the, reviews the efficiency of the survey process. Um, so I don't know how that sits, but. That was her recommendation.
Well, what about, so have, have we talked about, you know, a work group? Like with some providers in the industry to work with these surveyors to.
I volunteered to be on that.
Did you?
Yes, um.
Okay.
They didn't. They didn't jump up and say, we'll organize that next week, you know? We'll do that.
I think, I think that was kind of that conversation we had with Elaine, with Doug and Deb and I, and. I forget who else was on there, just basically like, okay, what do you guys think is wrong in the first place? And we were very clear, painfully clear, Rachel, like, I'll, I'll just be frank. Steve's name was brought up several times. You know, and, and it wasn't like, I mean, obviously in a very professional manner, but I mean, it was brought up that, hey, we're can, we're very concerned now as to where this is going.
Yeah.
You know, to the point to where Elaine is reviewing the IJs for CPR on first aid.
Oh, wow. Oh, my goodness.
I did that, I was bold enough to say, you know, you guys are coming to your industry partners. And being very nice in this discussion, but where were you guys when you were flagging everybody on their CPR directives? Where was our?
Yeah, are they gonna retract all those IDRs?
Yeah, I said, where was our nine-nine-nine tags for ninety days when that regulation got interpreted different? Where, where was playing nice then, guys? You know, I brought that up to your attention.
And, and I don't want to say that next time we're just gonna go to Elaine, but I'm gonna say next time we're gonna go to Elaine directly. Because we tried, and, and I even brought it up, I said, listen, we're trying to really be respectful, like Steve's new to the industry. Like the new to the department, new to assisted living, I said, and so we all kept trying to go through him, I said. But I, I told her, I said respectfully, I think next time we're just gonna go directly to you. If we start seeing trends and issues like this. Cause I don't think she a hundred percent knew what was going on.
Seriously. Oh, my God. But Nicole, we were in those meetings, ALEC meeting. We were saying, I had, I even brought it up, not that anybody was listening. But, you know, it's just like, seriously, where is the grace that they are providing to these providers during this time? Because it was like, seriously, we're just getting out of COVID and you guys are not. You are not giving us any opportunity to get this fixed. Instead, you're just like, I J, I J, I J. I mean, I think several of us had mentioned that during the whole process, and I believe Dee was part of that. You know, some of the, the people were part of those discussions.
He was on the call, but Elaine was not.
Oh, interesting.
And you know what? They did mention at the ALEC committee meeting last week, the, um, before it got dismissed. Steve Cox did say there was money set aside for educating surveyors and the industry on IJs. So he did say they, they. Cause they can use some of that money.
Did that include him, Janet?
I'd like to know who's doing the education. That's what kind of scares me. It's like, who's doing the education on this that it's, you know, that they're gonna spend this. Extra money on, because they've got to figure it out, because next year's right around the corner. And everybody is scared. I mean.
And Nicole, was it you and Janet? Last week, you guys were mentioning like some of the discrepancies on the, um. Was it you guys with the surveyors coming in and stuff and?
Oh, it's huge, Rachel. Rachel, I, I do, I'm, you know, I do consultant mandate now and now nobody wants to do their own P O C, so I'm on like twenty-seven coffee sites. And, and Steve knows that I know the inconsistencies. Um, of the survey process. He knows, because I pointed out to him, I said, if you want me to, I'll pull up the surveys for you, Steve. I'm on coffee sites like you can't believe, you know? I mean, I have, I have Betsy on speed dial these days, you know? So I said, I can show you without a doubt that your surveys are not consistent with the survey tag, the interpretation or the fine, you know?
But that's the whole thing is that when we brought it up, he's not, it's like, well, you know, we can't, we can't say anything. We have to go back to that specific day and that specific survey. Or and there might have been set of circumstances and they, you know, they sidestep it all the time. They sidestep it with that answer all the time.
Yep.
So back to the poll, um, there were a couple of answers that, um, I, I didn't answer because they, and they ask. What increase are you willing to accept? And then they give this old big ol' long list of what we're willing to accept on increases. And I put other and I said, cut your, be more efficient and cut your costs, like we had to do.
Yeah, don't put anything.
We're stuck in a market that we can't just have the luxury of increasing revenue. There's no revenue there to increase. So cut your costs. So I put that in there on the poll. And then the other thing they asked was. Um. Give us some suggestions about, um, you know, what index you would suggest. And I put in there that maybe you should consider your revenue stream before you did set what you should do. And if you're the regis, if the revenue stream is your Medicaid index. And you're only giving us a revenue increase of two percent this year for your Medicaid, then maybe that's what you should be set to also. Instead of this seven point six CPI index that isn't tied to anything other than the economy, which is kicking our butts. You know, so those are the two questions that I point blank said, here's what needs to happen on this. You need to be set to your revenue stream that you're giving us and you're giving us a two percent increase on the revenue side of this.
That's a good insight, Lisa.
And I, I think that's what we need to do is answer the poll honestly. You know, I mean, and just flat out be honest, because um, Elaine, Eileen came up with a really good thing. She's like, well, maybe instead of using the Denver Jeffco whatever index, that we should be using a social security index.
Oh.
Which is a much, I mean, we know that's a minute, small percentage, but it goes, it's, it's pretty fair. And it usually means too, that at least Medicaid providers can try to get a little bit of a bump above that maybe.
But we don't follow, the state doesn't follow the social security index for our, our increases in Medicaid. So we're stuck at a rate. That does not increase at the same time social security does. So they can't use that index if they're not gonna give us the benefit to get the revenue.
Well, and that was her thing. She's like, maybe that's what, like across the board, that's what the index, it should, that index should be used across the board. For HICPUF and for the state.
And for revenue, yeah.
For revenue, yeah.
Yeah, I'd go for that.
That, like Colin and all the people from HICPUF were awesome on these calls, knowing, hey, listen, this. Like, this is a married conversation. Everybody needs to be well aware what's going on, because the Medicaid providers are gonna come back asking for money, more money. And that's because you're jacking up our licensure fees.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but that's a very good point, Lisa, very good point.
So how do we need to leave this meeting? Cause we're, we're good.
I think, I think as far as one, we just wanted to keep, like, open up the conversation and get people to fill out the poll and fill out the poll honestly. I know that kind of the lobbyist Jennifer had kind of guided us all to say, hey, listen, these are probably some good. Ways to approach it. Don't negotiate, don't agree on anything, be neutral, be willing to work on a solution. Um, you know, so we don't want to slam the door. Um, but also on the flip side, like. We want equitable surveys. We're even gonna try and run some sort of bill about scope and severity this next legislative session. For the survey process, maybe this is our opportunity without having to run a bill. Like, we'll give you what you want. But you have to give us what we want in return and that's. And Jennifer had said, you know, maybe say, listen. We want you to run a study for this next year, which means we'll back you going to the J B C. And asking for them to fund the increase for one more, one more year. Meanwhile, we're running a efficiency survey strategy, whatever study, um, on the health department. Maybe there's ways they can use technology, maybe there's ways, there's, maybe there's things we can take for other states, so just be more efficient. Everybody wants to be efficient. And then if it comes through that they are efficient. Then we kind of get screwed, but it comes through they're not efficient and this is what they need to do to be efficient and they have to implement those before our rates go up.
Well, I have a suggestion on efficiency. That would help is they not run a revalidation and they rerun a license, because it's the same dang process. Run one process, quit running two processes to do the same thing. So they're running a revalidation on us through Medicaid and then they're running a, a licensing program through the state. And it's identical. You give the same information to them on both sides of it. Why don't they just combine those two and quit spending money to do it two times?
Well, didn't they used to do that? I mean, because I remember I was a Medicaid building and. They, they did, they're like, by the way, this is a Medicaid and state survey.
Yeah.
That seemed more efficient to me.
Yeah. Yeah, the revalidation, they, they go out and do another survey after they, they. Torture us through that process, then you go out and they do a survey there to just verify you have an exit sign. You know, it's minor, but they're having to employ people to fill those positions. And they're doubling up that effort. They don't need to.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you all for taking the time to come on the meeting. These are, you know, the industry needs to band together on a lot of different issues, you know? So we certainly appreciate your voice.
Well, there was just one more thing I wanted to mention too, because I, I mentioned this to, to you guys earlier about the joint commission. I don't know if you guys have ever, um, heard of the, uh, joint commission out there, but. I didn't know if that was also another option of efficiency. I, you know, I know it's expensive, but at the same time, it's like for people who actually go through that. When that eased the cost with the surveyors, since joint commission kind of follows facilities and making sure they're, they're meeting standards and staying. Cause I mean, I, I could see that with the larger places and I mean, even some of the smaller places, I think have, have thought about it, but. They don't recognize that in the state of Colorado, where they do recognize that in other states where that is considered. Uh, a survey tool that they can recognize.
I know in ambulatory care, um, uh, community health centers, they do a J, um, J code accreditation. And then you submit your accreditation and if you're accredited, they, they back way off on any survey. Cause they basically have a company proof. It is expensive on the accreditation, but it allows for us to not have. A bunch of interruptions on surveys and stuff, so.
Well, and they offer a lot of like resources. They, they offer a lot of resources to get you to where you need to be to be doing. Better work in your businesses, or you know, in the assisted livings or.
But it's like, it's ten thousand dollars a year. Per building. So for like, if you had six, eight beds. That's sixty thousand dollars a year, because I talked to them, I'm like, yeah, I mean, this is such a great idea and there's no reason why. I mean, the state doesn't have to buy into any of that, right? Like this saves the state a ton of money, like I would think, even though we're a self-funded department. But I mean, I don't know if we could afford it.
I don't know if it was that much based on your, and I wonder if there, I don't know with the Medicaid too, if there was a, there was a dis, I'm not even sure, but. Anyway, just, uh, that was a food for thought, just some.
I can follow up with her, because the last conference we had, the collaboration conference, I went to her, her session. Um, and I got her card and then I talked to her at the happy hour. And I'll see if she figured out a way, because I told her that's gonna be your biggest challenge in Colorado, figure out how to do it cheaper.
Yeah, for smaller facilities.
For smaller facilities and I could see us being willing to want to run some legislation to say, hey, we have a great way to bypass all this drama.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a great suggestion. I'll reach out to Rachel.
Yeah, because I mean, it just, I, I thought of her right away to Monet, Monet is her name.
Yeah.
But just thinking about things like that, that maybe would help the state, but the state has to recognize that too, so.
Agreed.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Great discussion. Yeah, fill out the survey, fill out the survey, everybody.
Hi.